Welcome to the October 28, 2025 Regular Session, which is our 24th Voting Session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. The Regular Session is now called the Order. First up, I'd like to have Reverend Steve Humphries come up for our invocation. If you'd all rise.
Let us pray. Spirit of wisdom and goodwill, we gather tonight to do the work of our city, to listen, to reason, to make good choices for the common good. May this space be one of calm hearts and clear minds. Help us to speak with respect and to listen with patience, even when we disagree. Remind us that the strength of our community is not measured by volume or spectacle, but by our shared commitment to kindness, fairness, and truth. That peace guide our words and purpose guide our actions, so that what is done here tonight strengthens the life we share as neighbors. Amen.
Stay standing for Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll have Councilman Clarity lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father, to the United States of America, to the Lord. To the Father, to the Father, to the Father. To the Father.
Okay, first up, we have our announcements. Our rules procedure is effective December 17, 2024. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our November meeting schedule follows. November 4, 2025 is a work session at 4:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 5, 2025 is our meeting with the Washington County Delegation and Hagerstown Community College. Tuesday, November 11, 2025, Veterans Day, no meeting is scheduled. Tuesday, November 18, 2025, work session at 4:00 p.m. And Tuesday, November 25, 2025, Regular Session at 7:00 p.m. We have two Proclamations tonight. Is anybody here for the Character Counts? Okay, all right.
Character counts week is celebrated annually in the third week of October.
It's time to recognize students who demonstrate good character and make positive choices to highlight the importance of building strong communities and good character. And Character Counts provides a framework of universal values that transcend cultural, religious, political, and socioeconomic values through the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And the theme for October 2025 is responsibility, one of the key pillars of character modeled by the leaders of our community to improve interactions in our society among citizens of all ages, in turn fostering a higher quality of life and enhancing the image of our city. And the character of the nation is only as strong as the character of its individual citizens. And the public good is advanced when people are taught that good character counts in personal relationships, in the workplace, school, and throughout the community. Therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, William McIntyre, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize October 25, 2025 as Character Counts Month and encourage all citizens, corporate, and individual to model these traits of good character in an ongoing commitment to promote character development and proper behavior throughout our community. Thank you. Trust me, he's here somewhere.
It's five, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Hey, guys. All right, next up is one of my favorite human beings, Mr. Bill Gertner. This young man leads Gatekeepers Reentry Resource Program, and he is a huge pillar of our community. And I'm happy to call you my friend. And they had a, we had a gala on Tuesday night for Mr. Gertner. Well-attended, but I wanted to do the same thing for him here that we did at the gala. And first up is, we presented him with the Key to the City. I can't, I can't think of a more deserving person than Mr. Bill Gertner to receive this for his extraordinary dedication to transforming lives and strengthening our community through his longstanding commitment to second chances and restorative justice. In recognition of your profound impact and steadfast service, the City of Hagerstown is honored to present Bill Gertner with the Key to the City, a symbol of our deepest appreciation and respect. And also, the City has a proclamation for Mr. Gertner. The City of Hagerstown proudly recognizes Bill Gertner, founder of Gatekeepers, for his extraordinary dedication to transforming lives and strengthening our community through his lifelong commitment to second chances and restorative justice. And after his own experience with incarceration, Bill Gertner turned his story into a mission creating Gatekeepers, a nonprofit organization devoted to providing resources, high-level mentorship, and opportunities for individuals re-entering society after incarceration. Through compassion, leadership, and unwavering faith in the potential of every person, Bill has built a movement that bridges the gap between incarceration and community, helping thousands of men and women reclaim their dignity, rebuild their lives, and contribute positively to society. And under his vision, Gatekeepers has become a trusted partner in re-entry efforts across Washington County, fostering collaboration among local agencies, faith-based organizations, and volunteers who share his belief that redemption is possible for all. Bill's work has not only impacted those returning home from incarceration, but has also inspired countless others to see the power of forgiveness, education, and purpose as tools for lasting change. Therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, William McIntyre, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize and honor Bill Gertner for his outstanding contributions to our community, his leadership in re-entry and recovery, and his unwavering belief in the value of every life. We celebrate his legacy of hope, compassion, and service, and we extend our deepest gratitude for his continued commitment to building a safer, stronger, and more inclusive Hagerstown for all. And I'd like to say, and I said this Thursday, that I started to go to Gatekeepers. I was asked to go to Gatekeepers before my election, and I can, I was asked to continue that after the election. This man has sat down with lunches with me, with dinners. I went there to see how I could be a help and a resource, and it got turned around on me. This man is supportive of myself, and the advice I received from him is invaluable, and I just want to tell you I love you.
Okay. One, two, three. Do you have a stick? One, two, three. One more. Okay. Can we get hit the borders to stand up?
Oh, that's a good one.
Just give a reading. Right. Here. There we go. So, one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thanks, Lawrence. Next up, we have agenda items and comments. Citizen comments on the agenda items shall be limited to topics with consideration on this agenda, limited to three minutes. They're all general? Okay. Since nobody signed up, we'll move on. Next up, we have our public hearing, rezoning application, Loritz Track, ZM 202502, 1912 Day Road, Mr. Steve Bachmiller.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Bachmiller, Deputy Director for Planning and Zoning Administration, recently moved into our new offices at 32 North Potomac Street, Hagerstown. Okay. This evening is a public hearing for a zoning map amendment for property in case file ZM 202502. The applicant is Curwood DH LLC, properties located with a mailing address or a street address of 1912 Day Road, however, it also fronts several other streets. Purposes of this application, the property is divided between the CG Commercial General and NMU zoning districts. And I'll direct you to the inset in the map in the top right corner shows the current configuration of zoning for the property. The peach color is current CG zoning. The bluish color is neighborhood mixed use. The applicant proposes to relocate the line dividing the parts that tracked in the two districts to be more rationally located for development. Much of the current CG zoned area would be included in the NMU district. The area in the northwest corner of the site, adjacent to the new intersection with Lois Harrison Boulevard, and a one-acre area behind the former IBM building would retain their CG zoning. So what we have here is a property that's currently split into two zoning districts. If the rezoning is approved, it will still be split into two zoning districts. It's just that the distribution of it will change, more of it becoming in the NMU district and less of it in the CG. A sketch plan is currently pending review by staff that would create a subdivision consisting of a mix of single-family homes, multiple types of townhouses, an apartment complex, and two commercial lots in various streets and open space areas. This rezoning application is not tied to that sketch plan. The area to be rezoned is approximately 22 acres, of which 7.3 acres is floodplain, which occupies roughly the center of the rezoned, rezoning area. If you'll refer to the map, there's three white labels. It's known as the north section, south section, and then the floodplain, the middle, roughly the middle third of the property is floodplain, and no buildings will be built in that area. So the actual developable area of the area to be rezoned is approximately 14 acres. In a piecemeal zoning, this is different than the most of the rezonings you've seen in the recent past, which are overlay zonings. This is a piecemeal rezoning, which requests that the actual base zoning of the property be rezoned from one classification to another. In piecemeal rezonings, Maryland law requires the applicant demonstrate that there has been a change in the character of the neighborhood since the last comprehensive zoning plan that warrants the reclassification, or that a mistake occurred in the last comprehensive zoning plan that warrants the change. If the applicant makes an arguable case that could meet one or both of these tests, then a second step would be to determine what the area's appropriate classification should be. The applicant does not allege, in this case, a change in the character of the neighborhood. Therefore, no definition of neighborhood is offered by the applicant. So you have one of two legal tests to meet, and they're already, from their perspective, saying they, they're not arguing that they meet one of them. They are relying in their argument on the fact that there was a mistake made in the comprehensive zoning plan in the rather arbitrary assignment of zoning classification bisecting the property. And this is the zoning map, actual amendment exhibit. What we provided was the illustration we provided in the staff report. In this illustration here, this black line that you see here is the current zoning line. Everything closer to dual highway from that line is zone CG Commercial General. Everything to the east of that line, keep in mind, north is roughly in that direction, everything to the east is zoned NMU. The proposal is for this area here, which is currently zoned CG, to be rezoned to NMU. Property history, the property was annexed in 1978 into the city as part of a 300-plus acre mass annexation of multiple properties on both sides of dual highway. The property was assigned R3 and C2 zoning when annexed. The R3 district was renamed RH, Residential High Density, in the first decade of this century. It is the city's most dense and intense residential zoning district. The C2 district now carries the label CG Commercial General. The annexation was approved with the condition that the property would only be assessed and taxed as agricultural land until it is developed. This results in the applicant's requested condition to protect the current owner should the rezoning be approved, but the pending sales contract not execute. In 2010 Comprehensive zoning plan, the RH zoning portion, zone portion of the property was, was reclassified to NMU, and the boundary line between the districts was adjusted slightly. This was done to implement policies of the comprehensive plan, then in effect, to encourage a more urban scale and density mixture of housing types using creative design methods akin to a traditional neighborhood development. The overall tract is bisected with floodplain delineated in 2017 updated FEMA flood map. Prior to 2017, this area was not designated floodplain. The area to be rezoned has street frontage on dual highway, Day Road, and Day View Drive. The portion of the tract to remain NMU has stub points for other street accesses as well. We will enter into the record by reference, the comprehensive plan, the city's land management code, the applicant's application and map amendment exhibit, confirmation of legal advertisement, confirmation of posting of the property, and adjoining property owners' letters were sent when this went to the public review meeting for the Planning Commission. There was a significant turnout at the Planning Commission meeting on this. A lot of that feedback, I'm not sure if you're going to have testimony here tonight, but a lot of that feedback were neighbors who were distressed over the fact that the property was coming into being developed at this point. The comments at the hearing weren't mostly directed toward the rezoning of this particular 22-acre portion of the 93-acre overall property. It was mostly folks who would like to see the property stay a farm. But nonetheless, this is a second public hearing where the public can testify to their concerns. But this application that's before you tonight is whether or not these 22 acres in the area close up to dual, to dual highway should be reclassified from CG to NMU. And we've already entered the, the legal advertisement by reference, and unless you have any questions, I'll then turn it over to the applicant at this point.
Any questions for Steve? Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Divalbess. Are you swearing?
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Certainly, Jason Divalbess, P.O., Box 202, Green Castle, PA. I'm the Land Use Council here for the applicant, Curwood DH.
Put your exhibit up.
Excellent, thank you. Curwood DH LLC, who is the contract purchaser of the subject 93-acre property that Steve identified earlier and shown there on the screen. As point of reference, in case anybody can't recognize it, this is the property that sits behind what I still call the IBM building, although I don't think IBM is still there. And it sort of sits behind the old Sheridan as well, so point of orientation, just off of dual highway in that location. I think Steve pointed out earlier that the property does have approximately 350 feet of frontage on dual highway, but as you can see from the graphic, and if you just picture where it is, it's also bounded by several mature, developed residential areas extending back off of Robinwood Drive in the Redwood Circle area, down from the Mount Etna Road area, as well as from the London Town Day roadside. So this property sort of sits there surrounded by an awful lot of activity. Consistent with that mixed-use surrounding, the property is currently split by two zoning classifications. There are approximately 19 acres of CG commercially zoned property closest to dual highway, and then there are approximately 74 acres of NMU zoned property closest to those existing residential areas abutting it. I want to point out again, the within request does not request a change to either of those classifications. The property is currently CG and NMU, and would remain CG and NMU after the request. The only difference is the request is to change some of the CG to NMU. So the amount of NMU would increase from 74 acres to 87 acres, plus or minus, and the amount of commercial would go from 19 down to 5 acres. But no fundamental change in the zoning classifications for the property or the general locations of either of those as they oriented dual highway and the other abutting areas. Despite being undeveloped for decades, this property is not identified in the city's comp plan for long-term preservation or conservation. Quite the opposite, it's designated for commercial, general, and mixed-use land uses, essentially mirroring the line you see on the zoning map. Perhaps more importantly, the property has long been identified in the comp plan as an underutilized parcel to be targeted as a top priority for growth and for revitalization. Now, Steve pointed out, this zoning does come on, come with one small twist, and that's at the request of the property owner, and that is that if this request were to be approved, it would not become effective until the property is transferred to this applicant or to another third-party buyer. There is an outside date to that, so that if the transfer does not occur by the end of 2027, then any approved rezoning would essentially expire and not become effective. Neither of those requests, by the way, violate Maryland statute or the city's policies, which only provide for a minimum timeframe to become effective, but not a maximum. As Steve pointed out, there are two principal elements to a piecemeal rezoning request such as this. The first is that we demonstrate either a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood or a mistake in the original zoning. In this case, it's a mistake argument, not a substantial change. And the second element is basically that the request be appropriate for the property in the context of the surrounding areas. And we would argue that we meet both of these criteria, the mistake as well as the appropriateness. Now, with regard to mistake, a little bit clarification and maybe explanation, Maryland courts have explained that as meaning that at the time the property was last comprehensively zoned, there were existing facts or reasonably foreseeable future trends that were not taken into consideration at that time. And again, a little bit of history is important. In this case, this property was initially annexed into the city in 1978, as part of a larger annexation of about 300 acres. At that time, it was assigned the R3, which was the high-density residential classification, as well as the C2, with the dividing line sort of being this arbitrary line that you still see here today. Best guess is that there was just an estimate of how much was appropriate commercial acreage extending back from dual highway, and that's where the line is drawn. If you see the exhibit that was attached to the application, you can see on the other side of dual highway, there's, there's another property that was owned by the same family, and there's a similar line showing parallel to dual highway about 500 feet back off of the road. By all estimates, that's the only real justification, it was just an arbitrary drawing of that line. So to point out again, that for about 50 years, this property has had a high-density residential and a commercial zoning classification, it's really been nothing new. In 2010, when the property was last comprehensively zoned, the R3 portion of the property, the rear portion, was changed to NMU, but the line between the commercial and the residential essentially stayed the same. And that decision left the approximate 19 acres of property extending well off of the dual highway and well down to behind the Sheridan along Day Road in place. In making that decision, in our argument at least, several facts and foreseeable trends were not sufficiently taken into consideration. First was the well-established pattern of a commercial development along dual highway, which really is limited to the frontage of dual highway. There's not a whole lot of depth of commercial development along dual highway, other than at the intersection with Edgewood's Drive, where the Martin Shopping Center, the AC&amp;T, the bank, the car wash, all of that. That's really the only area on dual highway where there's significant depth of commercial development. Second, in 2010, the first segment of R. Paul Smith Boulevard, running west along that shopping center and extending down in this direction, was there, and the plan to extend it eastward out to dual highway was well-known. We would contend that it was reasonably foreseeable that when that road was extended, as it has been now today, that that intersection of R. Paul Smith and what is now Lois Harrison Drive connecting to dual highway, that would be the area where commercial development would be and should be concentrated. Those couple of things were not duly taken into consideration in 2010, and therefore constitute the mistake that supports the argument that this line should be redrawn. With regard to the appropriateness, that one's actually rather self-evident, because there's no request to change the, the subject classifications for the property. There's CG and NMU now, we're not requesting to change them. It's consistent with the comp plan, as I pointed out earlier, and for those reasons, the appropriateness argument is somewhat self-evident and met. Lastly, I would like to point out, in August, the Planning Commission unanimously agreed and recommended approval of this request, and we would request the council to do the same after hearing this evening's testimony. There's no other questions, I'll sit down and get out of the way.
Any questions for Jason?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, there would be a request to see if there's any public comment as well, and I want to thank Jason also for pointing out my oversight that the Planning Commission did hold a public review meeting in August on this, and does recommend in favor of the rezoning.
Any public comment on, on this matter? Okay. Good point. Yeah, you missed it all.
I mean, Jason started with 1978, I thought I had some time.
You, you, I'll hold up, do you have any comments or anything that you'd like to say?
No, he hasn't been here in a while. I was gonna give him a little bit of a hard time, but it's not substantive. I just am curious how you can argue a mistake, but only if the developer wants it. So that's just odd, but I'm good with it.
Yeah, once he says he's good with it, he might as well not antagonize anymore. Okay, next up, we're gonna go to our motions. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
The record's been open.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion from the body to keep the record open for 10 days, and then after that closes, I'll return to you as your staff for direction on how you want to proceed after that.
Good. All right. Next up, we'll move to our motions. First up is approval of the minutes for August 19, 2025, 26, August 26, September 9, September 16, September 23, and September 30, all of 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I have a move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on August 19, 26, September 9, 16, 23, and September 30, all 2025.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the city's municipal plan. The city's municipal plan is a comprehensive plan, and it's 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 a comprehensive plan, and
September ninth, September sixteenth, September twenty-third, and September thirtieth, all of twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I have a move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on August nineteenth, twenty-sixth, September ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and September thirtieth, all twenty twenty-five.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending sections of chapter one, general provisions, article three thereof, municipal infractions.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that mayor and coun- mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter one, article three, by amending sections to chapter one, general provisions, article three, municipal infractions, which will increase the maximum penalties for municipal infractions citations to five thousand for a certain municipal infractions.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of chapter sixty-four, building construction, article three thereof, property maintenance standards.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter sixty-four, article three, by amending a section to chapter sixty-four, building construction, article three, property maintenance standards, which will increase the preset maximum penalties for municipal infractions citations ranging from five hundred to five thousand dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of chapter one eight-five nuisance abatement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the code of the, of the city of Hagerstown, chapter one eighty-five, nuisance abatement, which will increase the maximum penalties for municipal infractions citations to five thousand dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of chapter two-three-two vacant non-residential structures.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter two thirty-two, vacant non-residential structures, which will increase the maximum penalties for municipal infractions citations to five thousand dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of chapter two-three-three vacant residential structures.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter two thirty-three, vacant residential structures will, which will increase the maximum penalties for municipal infractions citations to five thousand.
Have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, add chapter two-three-four vending machines to the city code.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that mayor and city council approve an ordinance to add chapter two thirty-four vending machines to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This added chapter will regulate the number, placement, use of the maintenance of the vending machines on public sidewalks.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, authorizing the purchase of an easement over a portion of the certain parcel of real, uh, real property located at seven zero-three to seven zero-five Mount Etna Road, Hagerstown, Maryland. Mr. Mayor, remove the table of this motion. Have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll table that too. What date we have, Scott?
Uh.
Eleventh?
It would be, yes, to eleven. No, it would be the eighteenth.
All right.
We have a meeting on the eleventh.
Okay, we will table that till November eighteenth. Introduction of an ordinance, amending the city code, chapter six-zero dash one-seven, speed monitoring systems in school zones.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move to introduce an ordinance that amend the city code, chapter sixty dash seventeen, speed monitoring systems in school zones by making the city's schedule of fines consistent with state law and adding a savings clause.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion passes. Got that done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Approval of resolution, approval to enter into a user agreement with the Hagerstown Area Police Athletic League.
Mr. Mayor, remove the mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a user agreement with the Hagerstown Police, Area Police Athletic League for non-exclusive and exclusive use of a portion of Fairgrounds Park, consisting of the clubhouse and other amenities, as noted in the attached user agreement. The terms of the agreement is for three years, beginning on January one, twenty twenty-six, and concluding on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, with two possible renewal terms of one year each. The city shall change, the city shall charge no monetary rent for the use of the premises. The city shall pay for all utilities except for natural gas and telephone services.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution, approval of an equipment, maintenance, and software support services agreement with Hub Parking Technology USA Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council to approve a resolution to enter into an equipment, maintenance, and software support service agreement with Hub Parking Technology USA Inc., Hub. The agreement is for Hub to provide equipment and software support systems for the parking facilities of University District Parking Deck, the Arts and Entertainment Parking Deck, and the Hub City Garage. The length of this agreement shall be for a two-year term, beginning on August first, twenty twenty-five, with a possible extension of one additional year. The annual fee for year one shall be twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. The cost for the year two shall be twenty-two thousand dollars and, twenty-two thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-nine and ninety-two cents.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of resolution to accept the offer of a deed of easement and maintenance agreement located at the intersection of Makers Drive and Breckenridge Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland, from LP One LLC.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a rel- resolution to accept the offer of easement made by L.P. LLC of the perpetual and permanent water easement and the right of ingress for the purpose of constructing, operating, maintaining, repairing, replacing, removing, as needed, the facilities across, over, and under the parcel of land geographically depicted and identified herein as LW, WL, sorry, easement on the, on the easement exhibit prepared by Frederick and Cyber and Associated Incorporated, dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and attached to the deed of easement and the, and maintenance agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Adoption of a resolution, agreement to delay construction of a public street, Haven Road Two, annexation, case number A dash two zero zero seven dash zero six.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council adopt a resolution for Stephanie Jordan slash K.R.J. LLC pertaining to property within the municipal boundaries of the city of Hagerstown to amend the petitioner's third revised petition for annexation by increasing the number of dwelling units that may be constructed on the subject property prior to the construction of a public street connecting Haven Road and Prescott Drive from one hundred dwelling units to two hundred and six dwelling units.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of free holiday parking in the parking decks and garage.
Mr. Mayor, remove for the mayor and council to approve holiday parking that allows for free parking each weekend commencing at five P.M. Friday evenings and all day Saturday and Sunday in the University District Parking Deck, the Arts and Entertainment District Parking Deck, and the Hub City Garage, beginning Friday, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, through Sunday, December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Paid parking would resume each Monday morning at six A.M. Exact dates and times are attached. Full parking operations will resume on Monday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Parking at the street meters and parking lot meters will continue to be free after five P.M. On weekdays, every Saturday and Sunday, and on city holidays.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of funding for a community coalition lobbyist.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move, I hereby move for mayor and council authorization of the expenditure of five thousand dollars from the general fund operating budget in order to contribute toward hiring John Pavaza with the firm Manis, Canning, and Associates as the community coalition lobbyists. Other committed partners include the Washington County Commissioners, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Washington County Free Library, Greater Hagerstown Committee, and the Community Foundation, Hagerstown Community College, Town of Williamsport, Washington County Chamber of Commerce, and Chief, better known as Washington County Industrial Foundation.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of I.A.F.F. Local's one-six-zero-five contract.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of the attached I.A.F.F. Local sixteen oh-five contract to be effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. The approval includes the pay scale increases in the contract effective October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Payment of a one-time stipend in the gross amount of the difference between fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six wages multiplied by forty or forty-eight hours, whichever is applicable for twelve weeks, is also approved with this motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, uh, I'm gonna take about ten seconds to reiterate the comments that I've made uh, both in executive session and in public session, uh, on this matter. Uh, I have no issue, uh, supporting and approving this contract. Uh, what I continue to have issue with, as it relates to city fire service in general, is the fact that we have an ever-growing cost to provide fire service through the Hagerstown Fire Department, and we receive no offset from the county, in spite of the fact that that municipal fire service responds to a large part of this county on a daily basis. In short, I'm the average city taxpayer, single-family home in the city. I pay, let's say, two thousand dollars in city taxes each year. And I pay Washington County two thousand dollars in taxes each year. And about thirty percent of the taxes that I pay to the city fund the city fire department, so that I am assured as a city resident, I have a municipal fire service. The person living a block away from me outside of the city gets that exact same level of service without having to contribute any funding at all to receive it. It's a county taxpayer that pays my full county tax rate, and as a city taxpayer that pays my full city tax rate, the county does not provide me as a city taxpayer any type of offset for the fact that I am paying as a city resident for the city to provide a service that the county then doesn't have to. That is no different than how it does it for police and a number of other things that there's an offset for. That has to happen for us to continue to be able to afford to provide a municipal city fire service.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a contribution to the Washington County Historical Society.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council to approve a financial contribution to the Washington County Historical Society of up to forty thousand dollars for a feasibility study of the possible reuse of the former Discovery Station Building located at one oh-one West Washington Street. The total expected cost of the study is fifty thousand dollars plus contingency, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. The Washington County Historical Society is contributing twenty thousand dollars. The city contribution will be paid from the Economic Redevelopment Fund. The mayor and city council request staff to seek a Washington County contribution towards the forty thousand dollars needed of the Washington County Historical Society.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question, um, for Jill, or the, um, just for clarification, when this was brought to the body during a work session, um, the amount was thirty thousand dollars, correct?
Was an additional ten thousand dollars for contingency, uh, so they're up to forty thousand dollars in total. Expected to potentially up to sixty thousand dollars for the full scope of the project.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Got Donna? Yes, ma'am. Approval of a resolution, approval of an equipment, maintenance, and software support services agreement with Hub Parking Technology USA Incorporated.
We don't have that.
I think we're done.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Yeah, we're here.
Yeah. Okay. Grab that. All right. Next up, we have general citizen comments. I would like to make a couple, um, statements about general citizen comments, as we've had a few issues here over the last couple of weeks. I'm gonna ask one more time to keep it to three minutes. We have a timer on the wall. Also, we have a buzzer or dinger at the very end that tells you when three minutes is up. And I'm gonna hold everybody to those three minutes. When that buzzer goes off, that's it. We should be able to keep this within three minutes, unless you're telling a life story. I mean, you're, you're up here, um, you know, uh, with a grievance or a suggestion or an idea or something. So please, please, I'm asking you to keep it to three minutes. I don't want to have to tell anybody to step back, so keep an, just keep an eye on the, on the timer. Um, and that's, and that's in our, uh, rules of procedure in seven point one, at three minutes. Um, number two, um, I'm gonna ask you to stay on city business. Um, I'll, you know, anything that pertains to city business, and that's in, um, let's see, which one is that in that's in? Seven point two?
Seven, seven point one.
Seven point one. On city business. I'm gonna gavel you, as soon as I, as soon as we hear that nobody's staying on topic on city business, I'm gonna gavel you. I'm gonna ask you to stay on topic. If, if you don't stay on topic, I'll ask you to step away from the podium. And if you refuse to, uh, if you refuse, you will be removed from the chambers by law enforcement. So please keep it on city business. Um, and that's also in our, uh, uh, rules of procedure, seven point two. And the last one, um, refrain from personal or slanderous remarks to anyone. We're staying here on city topics, and I don't want to hear any more slanderous remarks on, on anyone. I don't care if they're city, county, wherever. I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm gonna gavel you, and I'm gonna ask you to leave. So, um, that's the only rules I have. Um, and first up, we have Stephanie Phillips. Also, if you step up, say your name and your address, please. Do you have anything, Donna? Okay.
Somebody left their equipment here.
You're like, we're okay.
Yes.
You're okay. Go ahead.
Oh. Good evening, councilmember, community S. Phillips. I prefer to be called Mrs. Michael. And I am in the city of Hagerstown, city limits. I want to thank you for your joint meeting in January twenty twenty-four with the city and the county commissioners. I thought it was really good. That's the only one that I'm aware of since two thousand seventeen, since I've been attending the county. And I think it would be great to add it to the regular recurring calendar. This is the third year I've suggested a commercial thanking Santa's other helpers. Our truckers were the original first responders before cell phones, helping stranded motorists. We could honor their service providers, postal service workers, other, uh, package handlers, retail workers. And this would be a good transition for children. In addition, we could get, uh, with the commercials, someone from the city or county fire department services to just suggest that the safest trees would be artificial with no lights that heat. Pine is one of the softest woods out there. It dries out very fast. It's a recipe for disaster. Ten days of use compared to years it takes to grow. Ten days of use compared to years it takes to grow, taking up a lot of forestry space, and it's one of the most flammable, would be better served by growing hardwood trees that could be used for building and providing heat for needy people. Check with your United States Forestry Service, and they would agree with this. You know, a lot of the forestry land, we could use more volunteers, is, uh, and the trails mostly maintained by volunteers and homeowners close by, and we could use a lot more help. Lastly, the new fieldhouse, uh, I haven't been there to visit yet, but I, and I've also seen about the new Boys and Girls Club. While I was working in Montgomery County, I worked with the Recreation Department, I worked with Community College for seventeen years, and international corporations. I had a lot of chance to work with a lot of different populations, homeschool children that were homeschooled at home with just their parents, groups of homeschool children, and I, I certainly hope since they're paying government taxpayer dollars for education while they're doing this at home with this extra space, that we could do a commercial and see that these kids could maybe come during the day and get some physical recreation and activity. Probably could find some retired teachers to volunteer. If you check with Maria at the, um, county commissioner, she could probably help you coordinate this, and especially for the ones that are just learning at home alone. They could have a chance to meet other homeschool kids and get, you know, some physical activity and education. That would be really great. Thank you for your consideration and your service to the community.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, next up, we have several members, um, here tonight speaking on the same topic, and I'd ask, um, for one out of those. I think I have fi- five people, five people signed up for the same topic. So, could we, um, Kathy Santiago, do you wanna go ahead and take the lead on this, or do you want somebody else? Up to you.
Hello, Kathy Santiago, 356 Henry Avenue. Um, basically, we are here, what I was here about last week, um, the issues that are down in our community, not, like I said, not just Bethel Gardens, but the whole community as a whole, Jonathan Street, Prospect, North, wherever. Um, the only thing that I would say is, I don't see a lot during the day, eight to four, they're not out, but when I go home at night, the residents see it, and that's why they came with me. There are the ones that see them stripping and doing whatever they do, and the drugs and everything else, and so maybe you could fit, find a way to have an officer come down and at least walk the property, walk the area, you know, to try to stop some of that. Um, I don't really know what the answer is, it'd be nice if they could do the substation, but we had that discussion last week because we don't have enough people, but we just need some kind of presence down there. I said it last week, I'll say it again, but mostly at night, mostly at night. I can handle it during the day, but at night, they don't deserve that. Nobody in Hagerstown deserves that. I mean, I'm not just talking about us, but we are here about Bethel. So, whatever you can do to help us would be great. You know, if you can get an officer down there, a couple hours a night, just walk in the beat like they used to. They have the bike officers downtown, why can't they come up there? You know, why can't they ride? We're part of downtown. So, we all should be included in that. It shouldn't just be geared to down here because it's not fair. They pay rent just like everybody else, a lot of them pay taxes, a lot of them do all the same things that you guys do. You wouldn't allow it to your house. They don't deserve it, they really don't. So, whatever you can do to help us would be great. We're doing what we can, what we can afford to do, but we can only afford to do so much. So, we need the city's help, we need the police help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, uh, Matt Sebo.
Matt Sebo, 17941 Reifrich Road, Hagerstown. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and my fellow workers. I work for the Public Works Department. Um, we are here asking for our contract to be taken seriously and equal to everyone else. I mean, police, they're very important for our city, we have to have them. Fire Department, same thing, very important, have to have them. We also have to have snowplow drivers. We have to have people fixing roads, people fixing sidewalks, people picking up trash, snow debris, tree debris, have to have a water department. City of Hagerstown has to have clean water, same thing with wastewater, you know, sewage has to be, go somewhere, has to be clean. It's all public safeties, you know? A few months back, the city council talked about making budget cuts here and there. I wanna be the first to thank you all because one of the major things that you said was you didn't wanna make any cuts that affected staffing or workers in general, and we appreciate that because without, you know, your all's support, there might have been some stuff that got cut, might have lost some people, it didn't happen, so thank you, thank you very much. But on the same token, we need help, you know, more money or get a wage study, reevaluate our pay scales because we're not paying as competitively as people around us. Frederick County, I know, you know, the cost of living there is a little more, but they're paid more versus counties getting higher raises here and there, you know? We're losing people and we can't replace them. And the people that we have here that are working day after day trying to make sure that the city stays as good as it is, they're leaving because they're going somewhere else to make more money, and we can't replace them when they're gone. And it's just, you know, it gets a little harder on the rest of us that are here. So, you know, I'm here to ask you, you know, please, if, if we can find it somewhere, wage study, reevaluate the pay scale, you know, because Public Works, Water, Wastewater, you know, we're, we're important to the city too. Even the little guys, you know, we help out here and there, we do our best, but we need y'all to just give us a little bit of help with that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Hey, uh, I thought I saw Eric Van Buren. There you, okay. You were hiding back there, I didn't know if you were still here or not.
Good evening, good evening. My condolences to you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Um, so-
Eric, just state your name and address real quick.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Uh, my name's Eric Van Buren, I live at 1106 Fry Avenue in Hagerstown. So, um, I'm here pursuant to, um, Article Five, Section 503 of the Hagerstown Charter. Um, it deals with you being a bipartisan body. Um, the people didn't vote for a party leadership, they voted for community leadership. Right, this council was created to rise above party lines and represent all citizens. When parties, when partisan talk enters into a nonpartisan seat, it breaks the trust of that charter. Now, partisanship divides partnership bills. I won't, I won't really get into that, but I got two personal reasons why, um, I brought this to the councils, what's his name, and it's on city business. Um, when I first decided to run for senate, my family asked me could I keep them safe? As a man, as a man, and as a grandfather, and as a father, and as a husband, and as a neighbor, um, I'm tasked with that. Um, and when I hear partisan talk from a bipartisan body due to, uh, what's going on in the nation, the amount of craziness because we don't know what's in people's hearts, um, it gives me some, it gives me some pause, it gives my family some pause. Um, so, I sent out an email to all of y'all, just, it wasn't an attack, it was just, uh, something, a plea to you, to stay within the charter, to stay bipartisan, um, because I don't want, I mean, the police do a good job, but they can't anticipate everything, you know, and, um, God forbid, because of me running for public office that, uh, somebody in my family gets hurt, um, if lightning should strike some of my family, all because somebody has a promoting partisan views. So, that's basically why I came up here, um, to remind this body, which was doing a great job, um, to stay within this, stay within the charter and remain bipartisan. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, Coriel Barrios.
Coriel Barrios, 230 Summit Avenue. Uh, I saw outside my house this flock safety device. I first thought it was a camera, but I, I found out it's an audio recording device. I did some research on this company, um, they take a lot of data, they've been, there was a class action lawsuit in Norfolk because the amount of data that they take in places where they're established is, uh, it's close to violating the Fourth Amendment, if not actually violating the Fourth Amendment, so I definitely don't wanna see them grow here. In addition to that, the data that they collect, it can be accessed without the, uh, knowledge of local law enforcement by ICE. It's been shared with private companies as part of a watch list they're developing for businesses. They're also working on data integration with Palantir, and, uh, Palantir's founder, Peter Thiel, has stated that he is against democracy. So, I would really prefer if these cameras, uh, do not continue to make their presence in Hagerstown. I agree that public safety is an issue. I don't think we can replace having police officers out in the community with this new technology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Alva Moses.
Alva Moses, 11 West Baltimore Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. Um, I'd like to thank the council for, uh, for recognition of Bill Gertner. You know, most of the council has, and the mayor has been at Gatekeepers, and I applaud that. You know, applaud that in high regard to my heart. Also, I would like to say to the Hagerstown housing, um, that I would like to applaud them for what they did in acting fast with, when they hit, when the fire hit Potomac Towers. You know, they had my electricity in the thirteens running, good to go by three o'clock, you know, and everything ran perfectly, you know, and it's great when, when stuff works the way it's supposed to. And, you know, and we're not supposed to get upset when it don't, but I just wanna say thank you for that. And I also would like to say, I would like to bring attention that it would be like awesome to have like a peer recovery specialist that would be a liaison between, um, the council and, you know, Chief Kyfer's Police Department that would work in, you know, communion, connection, that would be very awesome, and I would, you know, I'm just trying to bring that to attention, and thank you, God, you, council for your time and listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the last person to find up. Any email?
There are four emails, um, one was here this evening, sent an email, so, okay. So, there is an email from Brittany Tatters, who had her car recently vandalized and has not received a follow-up on the report. She suggests Mulberry Street for the next takeback area. Then there is an email from Gillian Crowder, who is a senior at Loyola University. Her team researched successful affordable housing and presented that research to San Francisco. She is offering to meet with the mayor and council along with her team if that's something that you wanna do. And then the last one is Lara Shepherd sent an email today saying that she wanted to be here this evening to express appreciation to a variety of folks in the community. I don't know whether she is here or not.
She was, I don't think she is now.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I saw you walk out. Sorry.
I wasn't wearing bright orange, sorry. Lara Shepherd, 13546 Paradise Church Road, Hagerstown. I wanted to express my appreciation to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council for their diligence in reviewing the out-of-doors lodging prohibition ordinance and putting it in place in a temporary status to begin with. I really appreciated that it was enacted in temporary status so that the community citizens, um, could analyze the data that, um, comes from that, and I think it was really important that, um, you guys did the discernment, very thoughtful discernment, I thought, uh, before voting on that ordinance, so I wanted to thank everybody for, uh, doing that. I also wanted to share my appreciation to the mayor and councilwoman Bell and Burnett, who participated in the Washington County Chamber of Exe and Issues, where you also shared more details of the update since that ordinance was in place. I remember you sharing, uh, there were zero arrests so far and zero dollars in fines so far, uh, plus the number of individuals that were referred by our, um, officers to different resources in the community due to that ordinance. And I just wanted to share to continue to do those things, I think it's very important that our community hears the details behind when those kinds of things are, uh, put into place so that people can see exactly what they're doing and how they're helping or bringing additional solutions to the forefront so that we can discuss those, um, and putting those in place as well. I also wanted to express my appreciation to everyone who volunteered and participated in the Mummers Day Parade. I know it takes a whole community to pull that kind of event off, and it still gets me as excited as if I was still a little kid, uh, getting ready to, uh, participate in it. Also, a big thank you to the public service organizations and the public works organizations who assisted with the parade that night, and to those who also assisted with the fires that broke out that night. Thanks to every one of them for all that they've been doing for our neighbors. And finally, Mayor, I also, like Alva said, I wanna thank you for being a leader and showing up regularly to the Gatekeepers Saturday Resource Clubs. We appreciate your attendance and interaction. I think personally that shows a real interest that you have in our justice-touched citizens, and it means a great deal to all of us to help all of them be re-acclimated into our community as our friends and neighbors. So, thanks again to everybody for all that you do for our community.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that's it on the email, right? Okay. City administrator?
All right, Mayor, thank you. Um, just wanna take this opportunity to thank the mayor, city council, city staff, and the hundreds of individuals that have reached out to me and my family expressing their condolences on the passing of my wife, Tressa. It's only been a week and a few hours, week and about twelve hours, but it could be, seem like five minutes or five years depending on the actual moment. She loved this community, especially the best-er South End community. We're still grasping and understanding this loss of such a young and vital woman, but know that within the Lord's plan for us, we will one day soon understand. Thank you again to everyone on behalf of myself, my daughter Caitlin, our three grandchildren, our son Jordan, and Tressa's parents. It has really meant the world to us, so thank you. November 1st through 8th, we are commemorating the 250-year legacy of the founder of what was First Elizabeth Town, but now known as Hagerstown, Jonathan Hager. The week will feature a slew of activities beginning Saturday, November 1st, with kickoff at the Hager House at 10:00 AM, as well as, as well as other sites, including the Museum of Fine Arts, the Miller House, the library, Zion Reformed UCC, and Christ Reformed Church. For more details, go to www.hager250.org, and watch for what I'm sure will be a flood of social media posts next week about all the activities. My favorite event, Trick or Treat, is recognized in the city on Friday, the 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00. Should be sunny and chilly, so no phone calls about whether we are postponing or rain-dating. It is happening Friday night. And, uh, again, I'd like to thank city staff for their work, uh, towards a successful Mummers Day Parade and the extracurricular activities that occurred, uh, that the fire department, the police department had to deal with, and it's good to see Officer Canode, um, back home and posting on Facebook. I knew that wouldn't take long for him to get back on Facebook, so, that's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Flaherty?
I was just saying-
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman, one more thing, I forgot, Jim Bender will kill me. Uh, recycling event, it's the electronic recycling event, uh, November 1st from 10:00 to 2:00 at Fairgrounds Park. City residents only, okay? And time changes next, on Saturday.
All right, hang, hang on one second, Councilman, the other councilman has to leave here real quick, and I wanna give him an opportunity, so, Councilman Alchar?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, never mind. Councilman Flaherty?
I would just say it was great success with the parade this past weekend. I really enjoyed hanging out with, uh, councilmembers, um, Burnett and Anderson, and we had a good time, and, you know, I know that HPD and Hagerstown Fire had a lot to deal with, with the parade, along with the fire going on and everything. I know you guys can walk and chew gum at the same time, and, you know, I'm glad that you guys were there to resolve that, and I did the Halloween costume contest with my dog. She didn't win, but she was just as cute, so- She didn't win, but she was just as cute, so that's all I have.
Councilwoman Bell?
Uh, yeah, so I missed the Mummer's Day Parade, but at least I got to spend that evening with the officers because I work at the hospital at night. And it is very good to see Officer Canoe back in action. So I'm happy that I got to really kind of just be there for you guys for support, so. And also, I would like to see if we could get Mr. Dwayne Freeman on the agenda for a work session. I would like him to come tell, tell everyone what they have in, on the, what they have going on at South High as far as the stadium, the architect that's coming out. He has some really good things that he expressed to us, Councilmember Anderson and Mayor McIntyre about what they have going on. When we went to do the coin toss and proclamation for the girls' flag football, although it was not a lot of people in the stands, I mean, if you have not seen these girls play football, they are amazing. I'm so happy that, you know, I was able to experience that with my young lady in the back as well. And also, I'm not sure if we're, you know, if, how soon this could happen, but if we could have something like a town hall meeting at Bethel Gardens, I feel like that will give a lot of them residents the opportunity to express to the officer. We hear a lot, we, they're able to talk to us, but I feel like it'd be a good idea for them to ask, be able to ask questions to the officers. And even if it's just to meet you guys, a lot of them may not know them by name. It is a different generation, so it'd be good for them, for the residents, to be able to express what they feel is going on. So I'm not sure how soon we could do that as well. I actually, Alva, I don't think that's a bad idea for a peer recovery specialist to kind of tag along maybe at times. I'm not sure how that would work, Chief and Ashley in the back, but I don't think it's a bad idea. I know a lot of times what you see is people that are struggling with addiction. So if we have somebody that can fully identify that, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to speak on the citizen comments first. I would like an officer to walk through the Bethel Gardens neighborhood sporadically, just to, again, show the presence. Doesn't have to be the substation that we talked about, but definitely to just walk through the area. And I know you guys do that anyway, but just make it known, I guess. I don't know if you want to say, hey, I'm here. But that would be a good idea, just to make a presence in Bethel Gardens. And as far as Matt from Public Works and your requests, we would have to look at the salaries and the wages during the budget cycle review, which is going to be next year. So we'll look into that next year. And I also like the idea of the peer recovery liaison, working with HPD, Alva. Thank you for that recommendation. I also like the idea of Mulberry being a part of Operation Take Back. And I support having Mr. Freeman come speak to council about South High and the, the new stadium they're working on and also be in favor of the town hall at Bethel Gardens. And this was a busy week for us. Want to say congratulations again to Mr. Bill Gertner for recognition. The mayor and Councilwoman Bell and I attended that dinner. And he has so many friends in high places. That was the first time that I saw the sheriff, our chief police, we had council, we had Senator Corniman, we had county commissioners there. There were priests, clergy, business folks, a nun. I mean, he knows everybody. It was, the whole room was inspired. The message was definitely about hope and second chances. And, and Mr. Bill is such a phenomenal person, so he definitely deserves city, key to the city. And the Halloween doll parade, got a chance to judge with our mayor. That was hard because all the costumes were amazing. We literally was like, like at the table, like, I don't know who to pick. They're all great. Can we just give them all awards? And thanks to the Parks and Recs, Amy, for coming back and saying you can give out some more awards because it was really hard to decide on who was going to win. And the Mummer's Parade, just want to thank the Zion Reformed Church for decorating the float. It was a Jonathan Hager 250-year celebration float. I had an awesome time hanging out with our council and mayor. Next year, we didn't, we didn't dress up this year. We didn't have a costume. Next year, it's on. So we're going to plan to be something really, really special. We're going to have a whole thing next year, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I shared some, a message on my council Facebook about the government shutdown and how folks are losing their jobs and there's a potential cuts to the SNAP benefits. People are experiencing high healthcare costs, just overall bad time for a lot of Americans. And I encourage everyone to reach out to our local organizations and give back. Give back their time, give back food, clothes, you name it. This is a, this is a, this is a time where we come together as a community to support one another in these difficult times. And another way to connect people to the resources that we have here. This is a great city, it's a great county, and we can do our part to make sure that we're all okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Anderson?
First off, I just kind of want to mimic what the other councilmembers have said. We had an amazing time at the Mummer's Day Parade. So big thank you to our police, our fire department, everyone who attended. And it's, it just goes without saying how we had a crisis around that time, and it was handled and taken care of seamlessly, like seamlessly. So that was great to see that that's what we have in our community. To Eric, I just wanted to thank you for being, reminding everyone that, you know, this is a bipartisan party and how we should stick to that and, you know, never, you know, get sidetracked from, from what we are. So thank you for that reminder. And to Mr., to Alva and to Laura, thank you for all also just reminding the community of, you know, just like all the great things that are happening. You guys are always bringing up suggestions and ideas. Again, I am in full support for your idea for the recovery liaison team. Us celebrating a Bill Gertner, that's another reminder that, you know, you want to make sure we're celebrating these people while they're here. So just, just don't take that for a grain of salt. It's, 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 it's very important. There are a lot of things that are happening. There are a lot of, you know, loved ones that are going through things. And I need everyone to remind that it might not be you, but it might be your neighbor. It might not be you, but it might be your coworker. It might not be you, but it might be someone in this room today. So just be very mindful in that. To Matt, I just want to say, if I could rename your department, I would. And I would rename it to Essential Workers because you are essential. A lot of the things that you do is not things that most people want to do on a day-to-day job, and they're highly needed. So I would be very open to revisiting that conversation about keeping you guys competitive. I would hate to see, you know, it go south. Sorry, didn't have one more. Let me see, where did she go? Sorry, guys. That's right, the Bethel community, I think they all left for tonight. But I did want to say a big thank you to them for coming out and sharing their concern. That is, you know, their consistency shows. And Chief Kifer, again, to mimic what Councilmember Burnett reiterated, I know there's not much that can possibly done immediately. Or if, you know, we do have officers that are on the ground, but if there's any way possible that visibility could just be just more visible, anything, anything to make that feeling go away. Because as she came up to the podium, you know, I really felt when she said, imagine if that were you, you know, like if that were your home or your neighborhood and you being the one at the podium, just reiterating that, hey, I'm seeing a lot of crime. I'm going through a lot, and I feel like I'm not receiving what I'm paying for when it comes to my tax dollars. So I really felt it when she spoke on that. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. First up for me, that tonight with citizen comments is exactly how this is supposed to work. Everybody kept it right where you're supposed to, no personal attacks. Everything stayed on city topic, and everybody was very respectful, and I really, 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 really appreciate that. And it's great to see the community. I mean, this, this place was full again. It's great to see the community come out and engaged in all this, and that's why we have to keep it like, like it was tonight, and that was perfect. I'm going to go ahead and, Ms. Lara Shepherd makes fun of me sometimes for giving Alva too much credit a lot, but Ms. Lara really stays engaged with the community, and I'm, it was really wonderful to hear you come up and say the positive things about what's going on. That was, that was great. And, and, and she did come into the mayor's office, and we toured the city and our city hall, and it was a great experience for her to be here. I want to give the Alstacia Club a shout out for putting on another successful parade. I want to give a shout out to our police officers and our fire department. A lot of things went on that night. Five officers, officers were hurt. It shows exactly why you are heroes in our eyes here. You mean, the fire at Lee Street rushed right in. And then the fire at Potomac Towers, everybody was right on it. And that's why, that's why you're heroes to us. Love to see Mr. Scott Nice Warner back. Our thoughts and prayers were with you for quite a while, and we, we love you. Also, I want to comment on, that was the, somebody else, was it, I think it was Councilwoman Bell said something about the North-South Girls' Flag Football Game. That was my first one, and I, that was very exciting, and I, I'd like to attend more of them whenever, next year. I think that was the last one this year, isn't it? Besides the playoffs, I'm pretty sure. Huh? Uh, South High, or North High, no, North High won, didn't it?
We left at half. It's okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
Go Hubs.
And I also want to, you know, that was a successful event on Thursday night to honor Bill Gertner. But the hidden thing in all of that is the people that put that on. The, everybody that was involved in putting that event on, that was great. I mean, there were so many people in that room that were so happy as that event went on. The meal was great, the company was great, and every, every table was full in that place. It was sold out, and there was extra, there was extra people that had to stand, and it was just a great evening. So I want to 100% make sure everybody knows that put that event on, you're appreciated. And that's it for me. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion about any items this evening? Okay, we're adjourned.